I'm a snowstorm.
Wait, two. Oh my goodness.
I'm being summoned outside.
Again, this is broken, so don't.
Don't.
Sit down. So.
No, to say it someday.
Okay. I'm assuming. Because of. We gotta do.
So we'll check out. Do they have to replace the drains?
They did replace some of the drains today. Play drains.
So we each had a different state.
State. No sense. We. We may have issues.
Oh.
But there's. Yeah.
So I didn't know. We each had a bathroom and. Steak.
Snack food there. It doesn't.
Right. Yeah, I think a lot.
Well, never.
Yeah, that's.
And they were tasty. Um, because. They made it in like.
I want your coat too.
No. Thanks. Yeah.
When I got my duration. I'm very hard with.
Yes, right.
But.
I'm telling you. Oh, they hurt like I did. I see how you're doing.
Maybe those.
Two things. Nine more to. It's come. Oh my god. It had me listening.
Oh.
We even don't stop.
Oh, they worse. They worse.
My god. No, no.
I'm sorry.
Man, you don't.
You got a card. The stock. That's not good. You see, I did. You know. I'm not going like. I feel my.
We may. This is where we had more work than do. Well.
I'm like. Turn around. Hello. I got a thing to get in. I got to work today. She was turned on.
I was in the apartment.
I don't know. Change my. Be eight or something. I don't know. It's not fun anymore. Like it's. Like. It was too late. For the safety. Yeah, but no, I can't talk. You guys. I know, that's what I'm saying. We can't. I just.
I can't say to nobody no more.
Did you?
No, I didn't.
You're saying anything? It's all. I was just like. It was all true. If I stand behind it, if anybody subscribes to. Learn it. Our personal condition before the meeting starts. On one. Wow, terrible house. What did I got here? I'm gonna do it. What else? Actually, some of my favorites. I didn't see as many people and I don't.
I know.
Told you some of the cars. Can I stop?
Everybody can have a brain milk pen. Yeah.
He thought he'd fill him in school.
He's got. He's ready to do it. I told him. I told him.
Eric, you get a whole mic? Supposed to be.
Oh, wait, no.
Could I talk to him last? Unless you want to say that. He said he could hold it. He's gonna call. Yeah, definitely. We told him to get.
So. Oh.
Everybody's. Yeah. Yeah. That's the best. Good. He said we're telling. Yeah.
I don't think so. It shouldn't be. No. She wants to know from one. I told her.
She had a word for.
She don't know what's happening. Did you win? Yo. Hi. I'm sorry. Certainly nothing. Hi, Joel.
Hey, Dawn.
You can hear me?
I can. Can you hear me all right?
I can.
Yeah.
Yep.
Would you like to do a full screen? This isn't.
I'm not touching anything. Do you know how to do that? To see. This? Oh, there you are. It is already up there, isn't it?
I know, but.
Oh, okay. Maybe we'll see two.
Well, you can. You can delete. You don't need to accept that and actually.
Okay.
Uninvite.
All right, we're good. We're good.
Yeah, take that out.
All right, is everybody ready? Seven o'clock. Call this meeting to order roll call.
Michael Benrose.
Here.
Lauren Stever.
Here.
Harsh stretch. Karen Greenlee.
Here.
Amanda Rose.
Here.
Mark Bruch.
Here.
Pamela.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Citizens comment. The chair will recognize any citizen that would like to comment at this time while discussing and any action will be referred to the proper committee for future agenda consideration. Scott Purdy. Test. Go hear that. There it is. There we go. Uh, Scott Purdy, one twenty-nine East U Drive. Uh, I'd like to thank you for hearing me today. Uh, I'm speaking on behalf of ordinance two eighty-eight, which is on the agenda. Uh, I would personally like to thank, uh, the commission for bringing this, uh, to the board. Uh, I encourage the board to approve these changes brought forth by the planning commission tonight. Uh, I truly believe these changes will help maintain the home values while promoting a healthy, controlled growth. Thank you. Anyone?
I would like to talk as a citizen. I'd like to step down. Hi. Pam Shutt from one forty-nine Martin Street. Got a couple of things. Um, the first thing, I just wanted to thank a whole bunch of people because we did a benefit for someone in town in need. This is what I call a tight knit small community and what it should be. Um, I want to thank Mike and Butch and Mark and Marge and Karen, Dawn Levenus, Jody, Eric, Ca- Carl Springhorn, all the fire department people that came. Made it a very big success. Um, we had a lot of businesses also, which makes this town a good town to live in, even if you hear bad things. The Coffee Cup, Mertz Ice Cream Shop, Razor's Edge, even the new, um, car shop, Chuck Dorn's Woodworking, Kip and Dubs, Pat's Brewing Q, Ferrari Farms, even outside businesses like Bops and Rush Creek Distillery and Hires and True Value and Sentry and Stumble In. Because of all you being human and kind humans, that's what made a difference for this girl that needed it. Also, I wanted to mention, as many of you are aware, the ice cream shop has gone through a lot of issues with another business in town. The ice cream shop is an open business with customers coming in and out. And I would like you guys to consider making sure that next summer she doesn't go through what she went through this summer. I believe she's done a lot for this village. She donates all the time for the retiree picnic for the rescue squad. She donates. She helps with the police department doing the bicycle helmet safety classes. She donates to a lot of people and gives her time. She came to the benefit also and donated to the benefit. I would like to show you a few pictures of what kind of a mess she had this summer, if I can address the board. Those pictures you see up by her front door with all that stuff pushed to her door was the very last thing that happened before they left with the scaffolding. I feel like her business was open and running and there were people there and it wasn't safe for them people. There were other things that could have been done differently. That other business who has no one in there, no open business, just a building they're trying to fix, could have been working hours like eight to three instead of noon to eight when she was open. There were just a lot of things. I'm sure you've all driven by and seen things that happened. And I just, as a citizen, think it was very concerning.
Anyone else? Hearing none? Approval of minutes? Motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting July eighth. Is that the right?
It shouldn't say July.
She didn't say September.
I'll make.
We'll move on.
Yeah.
Put that on there. Approval of invoices. Motion to approve the invoices as submitted. Finance committee met last week and approved the initials. Was there any add-ons?
Yeah. I have a question on the add-ons. Right, we have so many for at the service. Were they catching up?
That's the way they came in.
That's the way they came in.
I'm not sure why. What is it? Four or five months there?
June? At least four.
It's only two.
No, one, two, three.
One's for Raymar and one's for Goodland. Did they pick them up there?
Oh, not yet, but it's. It seems much that. Each month they service them. They're gonna be picked up on, um, November first.
Do you think maybe they bill like two months knowing that like? I don't know. It's just. They both, or they all count the same date? Is there?
That's how the bills came in. It's for June, July, August, then September for Raymar Park and Goodland Park. So there's four invoices for each park. So we, eight invoices total.
So are there some on here? Cause I'm only seeing four total. So two for Raymar and two for Goodland.
There's more on the original listing.
So some came in and then more came in later?
Yes.
We talked about the July. Some of them on for the July fourth date.
So there's, there's two more. So it's a total of three. So they bill quarterly. So what it looks like.
That's how they came in, I'm assuming.
I'll make a motion that we approve the invoices as submitted. How seconded? Been made in second to pay the invoices. Another discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Twenty twenty-four audit review Zoom. Audit review with Bowman and Associates. Don, you're on.
Can you hear them, Joel?
Uh, I can. It's faint, but I guess I can. It's, I could hear. It was my turn to speak here.
It's your turn.
It sounds good. Sounds good. Um. Perfect, well, dive right in. Um, nice to be here tonight and, uh, my name is, uh, Joe Harrison. Principal with, uh, Bowman Associates, uh, part of our, our local government, uh, audit accounting practice. Um, and I'm here tonight to go over the twenty twenty-four audit, uh, with the board. Um, so my goal is to give it, get the high level overview, uh, of the audit, what the audit process looks like. Development to how, kind of how we think about things, what our, what our process looks like to get to the testing and all the procedures we need to do to express our audit opinion. Uh, from there, we'll dive into, uh, audit, the audit results. Uh, what was our opinion, what were findings, et cetera, that we'd like to communicate, uh, to the board tonight. Um, and then, and mixed in with there, we'll be reviewing your financials and, um, I know your, your group reviews these routinely, excuse me, at meetings, so not gonna go back and sort of rehash the ups and downs of certain accounts, but want, want the group to know kind of how to interpret, how to kind of digest, um, the financials in front of them tonight. Um, government financials and government accounting standards. Um, do you have additional complexities compared to, uh, for profit and some of the normal non-governmental type accounting standards? And, um, the financials are complex. They're not always easy to interpret. Just to give a high level overview of what is all, um, in your financial statement. Any point? Feel free to stop me, ask questions, um, make some time at the end as well to, to, uh, make sure any questions are answered. Hi.
Oh, no.
Tell them that. Am I sharing my screen? Will everyone be able to see things okay?
I think so.
If, if not, I, it, it's fine. I can, I can just kind of walk through it and explain, explain what, uh, what I'm presenting tonight. With. Should, should I, should I share my screen, Dawn, or should I? I, I could just talk, definitely talk through things as well. Um.
I didn't hear what your question was.
Oh, should I, should I share my screen? Would, would the group be able to see?
Yeah, you're, you're. You're on the, the television, so they should be able to see it.
All right, yes, I will. I will do that then. And Dawn? You may have to accept my request to share, it looks like.
I did accept it.
Let me try one more time here. Okay. All right, I think, I think we're good to go. Um, so. Yeah, so like I said, my goal is to, um, hope, hopefully everyone can see, see the financials. I'm gonna blow these up a little bit. Probably it's a little small. Um, so this is, these are the first few pages of, of the financial statements. This is our audit report as, as the village's independent auditor. Um, this whole report is sixty-six pages long, so the, the first two or three are really the only, the only pages in there that are, are truly Bowman's, right? All the other financial statements are, um, the management of, of responsibility, excuse me, of the village management, the governing body, right? So, um, management of the village is, is ultimately responsible for these financial statements, that the controls and the processes and all the things that go into, um, the presentation of these financial statements. Those are, those are also the villages, right? And where our, where our job comes in is we're taking the village's numbers and we are looking to obtain enough evidence that, that the village's financial statements are, um, free from material statements, right? And, and the, the level of assurance that we're looking to, looking to obtain is, is called reasonable assurance. So this is right, right from the auditing standards. Um, the definition of a reasonable, reasonable assurance is a high level of assurance, uh, but it's, it's not absolute, right? So the, the example I always give in this is even if an audit is planned and performed to a T, um, if there's fraud going on, if there's collusion and intentional misrepresentations to our auditing, it's gonna be pretty tricky for your auditor to, to discover that, honestly. Um, that's where such a small percentage of, of fraud and accounting fraud is actually detected, um, through a financial statement audit. Um, but again, what are, what are, what our audit opinion means is that there is a reasonable assurance that there are no material misstatements, whether due, whether caused by fraud or just error. Um, so. But in order to, in order for us to get it, to, to get enough audit evidence and for us to express an opinion, there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that goes into it, right? So we do a ton of planning. We do a ton of risk assessment procedures. So we're looking at transactions that are inherently material, inherently if they're open to estimates or other subjective things, right? Um, there are estimates that are found without, within these financial statements, right? So, um, that would be an example of something we look at a little bit closer, we are testing on, right? Um, we, we evaluate internal controls and we gain an understanding. We're not expressing an opinion, but we have to understand your internal controls for us to, um, do our risk assessments and, uh, and design our audit procedures. And, and from there, we get it, we get into testing, right? So the, this is all the front end. We're doing a lot of risk assessments, a lot of planning. Um, and then the fieldwork part is actually relatively, can be a relatively smaller part of the overall audit, right? Where our team's doing, doing the testing and getting in there. Um, once we've gathered enough audit, audit evidence, we do assess the village in preparing, um, the financials, which we'll go over in a sec here. Um, but, and that's, so there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of time we spent where we're not in kind of contact with, uh, with Dawn Jamie during our risk assess, risk assessment, excuse me, during the, the financial statement prep. Um, but there also, there also is a lot of time we are going back and forth and, and working through the audit with, with those two, right? Um, so just a high level review, that's kind of, kind of the process of how, how the audit is conducted. Um. Gonna jump right, kind of right to the, the point and the, the reason why you have an audit, right? So for, for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, um, we issued an unmodified opinion, right? So that is the, essentially what that means, that is the live highest level of assurance that we as your auditors can offer. Um, so based what our opinion, what our opinion means is that we found, we're saying there are no material misstatements in whether due to fraud or error, um, in your financial statements, so. I'm gonna pause there, I guess, just to make sure. Questions, anything, anything related to our report for twenty twenty-four?
I believe anything at this time.
Sounds good. Um. Like I mentioned at the beginning, the government financials are complex, right? And it, um, in the, in the audit financials that the, the group should have in front of nights, uh, the, the basic financial statements start on page seven. They go all the way to, scroll down here, um, page fourteen. So we have eight, eight total pages of financial statements, which, um, there's a lot going on, right? And again, like, keep saying government, government financials are complex. There are different types of funds that have different types of accounting rules. Um, so I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to paint a picture of how these all interconnect and how they all roll up into each other. Um, it's weird, it's kind of weird how they're organized, right? Where our first two pages are the government-wide financials. Uh, but I'm actually gonna start, um, starting on page six. Page six and page eight are the governmental funds, um, financial statements. So to be a governmental fund, um, that is commonly, a fund that is generally financed through tax levy, intergovernmental aid, revenues. Um, usually, usually the main, the main sources of funding, right? So, um, for, for Sharon, that would be your general fund. Your, and your two tids are the two major funds. There's several other non-major funds that are aggregated together. Um, so these are, these are the governmental funds. This is the balance sheet, which is, the balance sheet is a snapshot of a point in time of what, what you own, what your assets, um, what you owe to outside parties, outside creditors, which are liabilities. Um, and then it's the remaining, the remaining balance slash deficit in some cases, right? So, um, for example, your, your general fund has a, a fund balance of just over two million. Um, two tids have, have fund balances that are, that are in the deficit, right? At the end of, at the end of twenty twenty-four. So that's a, this, this sheet is a snapshot of a point in time of kind of the position of, of your governmental funds. The other key, um, financial statement is for, for governmental funds is the statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance, right? So this is a, rather than being at a point in time, this is a summary of all the activities over the. It's broken out by revenues, which are positive. Um, our resources coming into the village and then it's expenditures, which are monies going out. Um, and there's also some other financing sources and uses, right? But largest, the largest revenues are, obviously not surprising, like I mentioned, taxes, intergovernmental revenue. There are charges for service, recycling is the biggest one in there. Um, and miscellaneous is actually higher than normal too. There was, uh, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar donation for, um, for land purchase. That very specific intent, right? Um, flip over to the, the other side of the equation, we have, it's broken up by functions. So it's general government, public safety, public works, et cetera, right? So, um, this is a snapshot of, of the activities, the flows in and out of, um, in and out of each fund during the year. Um, so the, the net, there's a net outflow in the general fund of about forty-six thousand. Um, tip four of about sixty-three, negative sixty-three. Tip five, uh, just under ten thousand and then aggregate of all your other funds is about thirty thousand. Um, so those are, those are your governmental funds. The next names that are financials, uh, financials relate to proprietary funds. So rather than being financed through taxes and intergovernmental aid, these are, these are financed more through, uh, an exchange of goods or services, right? So these are your, your water and sewer utilities, right? Um, it kind of operate more like a normal business where there is a, a service that's being offered to, um, to your, your, your citizens, right? Of, of the village and, um, just like we started, the first, the first statement is the balance sheet. Assets, liabilities, that overall net position, uh, which is, which is in the positive. It is looking at your income statement. What were water charges? What were sewer charges? Those are the main sources of revenue. What are the operating, operating maintenance expenses? What is the depreciation expenses, right? What is the interest income? Excuse me, interest, interest expense on long-term debt. That's more of an example of a non-operating activity. Um, a property tax equivalent that's paid to your general fund. Um, so for the year, the combined net loss in your utilities was a hundred and seven thousand. The third statement that isn't part of. The third statement that isn't part of the governmental funds is the cash flow statement. Um, so, this figure here, the hundred and seven thousand is not, it's not representative of net cash flows, right? So there's timing, there's the concept that we, these financials are, are, are crew base versus cash base, right? So, um, the, the sewer actually brought in a positive, I shouldn't say the sewer, your utilities brought in a positive eighty-six thousand, six twenty, um, in cash, positive cash flow through the operations. Um, it did pay the property tax equivalent of above seventy-nine thousand to the village. Um, and, and there's a lot of financing activities, there were, um, I know there's a wa- wastewater treatment plant, uh, that was gearing up in twenty-four. You can see significant debt that was brought on, again, to finance that and then gearing up for the expenditures that we're expecting in twenty twenty-five. Um, so there's actually a, a big cash inflow because of that, which is temporary and, and will be, will be used for capital expenditures. Um, so, we, we looked at governmental funds, we looked at proprietary funds. Both of these roll up then, kind of back to my main point, both these roll up into our government-wide activities, right? So, um, and that's, that's what this is, this is presented as a total of, total governmental funds, your total business-type funds. Um, total assets at the end of twenty-four was twenty million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Total liabilities about just under thirteen million, um, with a, with a positive kind of net position of six million, seven hundred thousand, just under that. So, um, let's, again, I, I keep saying it, but complex financial statements, but that's kind of how the, the flows and how these, how these different financials on a high level tie into each other. Any questions? Hey, Don, I'm gonna move over to just some other high-level overviews, some significant audit findings, um, that, that want to communicate to the board. There were, there were a couple new, um, accounting standards that were implemented during the year, that we worked with Dawn and Jamie on. Ultimately, neither were, were significant to the village's financials. Um. During the course of our audit, though, we noted no transactions undertaken to by the village that lacked authoritative guidance or consensus. And there are no significant transactions that have been recognized in the financial statements that are in the incorrect period. So, um, again, tying back to our opinion, good news, good news to hear. There are a few significant accounting estimates that are in your financial statements. Appreciation expense on, on capital assets. So, we outlay money now, we spend money now on, on assets that are used for utilities or, or, or streets or roads or other parts of, using your government that have lives that, that benefit the village over a longer period of time. So we try to capture that, spread the life, spread the cost of that, or the life of those assets in the form of depreciation. Um, other big, other big, uh, accounting estimates relate to the participation in the W, WRS pension and the local retiree life insurance fund. Um, so, both of those, we, we re, we take actuary calculations. We, we test them and do procedures on them, but there's a lot of factors and a lot of assumptions that the actuaries make, um, when reporting the, the balances and reflecting the balances for your WRS and your local retiree life insurance fund. Um. Pleased to say that no, no difficulties working with, working with the team. Uh, Dawn, Jamie have always been very good to work with, very helpful, very accommodating. Um, so no, no difficulties there. We, we did propose, uh, journal entries throughout the course of the audit, um, that those were, those were attached to our, our management rep letter. All those are accounted for, all those are adjusted in, in the accounting records. Again, no, no disagreements with management, no other, no, just on, on any matter, really, whether it's accounting, reporting, auditing. Um, so, pleased to report none of those, none of those differences. So, yeah, again, overall, audit went well. Um, and, yeah, I think, I think those are the significant things I wanted to mention on this page. There is a third letter, uh, that, that accompanies the, the financial statement, or that, the second letter to me that accompanies the financial statements. Um, and, and I mentioned briefly earlier on internal controls. We evaluate, um, we look at, we unders, gain an understanding of internal controls. But we're also, at the end of the day, we're not expressing an opinion. Uh, but if we do, um, if we do find things that, that merit reporting to the gov, to governance, which in this case is your board, um, it's our, it's our, it's our responsibility, our duty to, to report that, right? And, um, and I'm, I'm as, most, almost all the comments in here are, are things that are, that are extremely common with the client, the client base we work with in the state, right? Um. Said it several times, but useful accounting is complex. There's PSC reporting, there's levy limits, there's all sorts of different, different funds of different accounting, accounting, um, requirements and rules, right? Which makes it very, very tricky. Um, and, and a lot of that accounting is placed on folks that are very busy during the day dealing with other administrative things. Citizens coming in, talking to them off the street, there's a lot of, there's a lot of hats that you juggle, right, in a, a village office? So, um, just like to preface that, cause I, 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 we do see these a lot, and I, I don't, these are not meant to raise red flags whatsoever, right? So, um, but in a, in a great segregation duties. This is, this is a very common, it's inherent in a small government, any lot of small businesses. Uh, this is a, this is a comment we, we have across a lot of our, a lot of our audits. And with the size of the office, it's almost inherent that this needs to be in there, right? And the reason it's in there is because there, when there is a small office, there are more opportunities for, um, for things to happen. The people in the office are doing more things within each transaction cycle, which opens the door for possibilities. So it's important to know that does increase inherent risks related to fraud. Uh, but that board monitoring and oversight and is a, is a great safeguard for that, right? And, uh, it's just being cognizant of, of the small office setting. The, the financial statements that we, we touched on briefly, um, we're, if, if we ever help out and we can't prepare and set up the footnotes, our standards require, um, that we put them in there. Um, and then the other two, the other two notes we'll hit on is constable reconciliation. Uh, and this is something that Jamie and Dawn, we worked really hard on and spent a lot of time on. And, um, and just keeping sure that the AP listing is reconciled and tied into the general ledger. Um, and material audit adjustments. So there are just, again, things, we're working with Dawn and Jamie, um, we're proposing entries. Really, at the end of the day, we want to be, we want to be more than just the village's auditor, right? Uh, we're hoping to be that advisor that the village's team can come to when there are accounting questions. So, um, we want, we want to add value beyond just beyond issue and the audit, right? So, um, but there were, were material audit adjustments that we proposed, which Dawn and Jamie reviewed and approved, right? So, um. Kind of hits on what I'm, what I'm looking to cover tonight. Um, I'm going to start sharing. So yeah, that, that was, that was the notes I wanted to hit on, I guess, any, any questions?
My only question or thought is, normally that, because it is a small office, we don't have as many checks and balances as the bigger cities. And that's why that statement's always put into our, our audit. We just don't have that many people to, to do the checks and balances. It's just them, Jamie and, Jamie and Dawn. And so it, it makes it hard, but they always seem to put that in a small community's audit, whether it's Sharon or Quentin or Walworth. There just aren't a lot of people to check these things. It's the board's responsibility and we accept that. If you could hear me out.
It's a bit, a bit, bit hard to hear there, I, I did hear the checks and balances of Dawn and Jamie. And again, that, that segregation of duties comment is something that Sharon's, Sharon's not alone with. There's a huge percentage of local governments in the state, by nationwide, right? That they, they're thinking about this, um, and, and, again, and it's important to be on the forefront. It's important to do the risk assessments, it's important to say where, where can things go wrong? Um, and, and then put the planning in place and that, there are, at the end of the day, designing the safeguards, right? Um, to the best, the best of the, each, each village's, each government's ability, right? Um, in that, in that perfect world, you could hire five more people and segregate things, um, as much as you wanted. And that's not, that's not reality, that's not practical, right? Um, so, um, being mindful and, and coming up with the responses is, is, is this always something we like to highlight?
Anyone else have any questions or comments? No. I know, I think we can end, end the, the meeting, and thank you.
No more questions, Joe.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Yep, bye.
Library report, library director, Dr. Panning.
Good evening, everyone. Um, as you're aware, last month, we implemented some after-hours programming. So far, our most successful program has been the Adult Crack at Night with fourteen attendees, some of which were actually from Inspiration Ministries outside Williams Bay. And we're going to work with them in the future and do more programs with people with disabilities in the area. Um, and then this week, we also be on the inventory of our entire collection. Last time it was done was twenty sixteen. This is to ensure that our physical collection matches our database and correcting errors.
Thank you.
Anything? Moving on, police department reports, chief people.
Everybody should have my report in front of them, I'll go over it quickly. Cause everyone's probably heard by now, the village's lost two members in their community. Sharon PD assisted, uh, the county's investigative team, they're called MYA, in preparing a search warrant for residents, uh, within the village of Sharon. It involved death investigation of two members of our community. And this happened outside of our area, in a town in Illinois. The team, uh, used a flock camera system to system a timeline of their investigation. Our first group of family all involved in this tragic incident, uh, this matter's still under investigation, although it's probably completing, it's getting near to the end. I want to stress that nobody was in danger in our community at that time. Sharon PD, uh, took an abesland complaint from a church within our community. Investigation's been turned over to Department of Criminal Investigations, Milwaukee Division. Um, they should be ending that investigation soon. We're expecting to send charges up on the individuals involved. For informational purposes, Officer Echo Krause is saying the minor injury while conducting an arrest on intoxicated individual within the town. Orphans complaint was filed, the officer was cleared, come back to work on his next shift. And staffing, um, we're awaiting the psych exam results for the newest applicant. Um, once those are in, the drug screen and medical examination should follow. Um, I did receive an email from Officer Bash last week. His intention to resign from his part-time position for our village, and he actually did resign on Saturday. In, in good standing. Uh, he's just getting out of law enforcement. Uh, equipment-wise with the, uh, this, this newest squad car, um, we're gonna be going with ultra-stroke to outfit the car, I mean, putting the cage in, the lights, all the other radio equipment. Um, we're approximately two thousand less than the other two bits that we received. It's gonna take about six to eight weeks to get all the equipment in before it can really get the car completed. It's unfortunate, but that's just the way the world is right now, getting equipment. Statistics as of today's date, actually last week's date, let's just prepare. We had six hundred and fourteen calls to service from September fourth to eighth. Tell number, uh, calls for service for our police department was four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven for this year. And, um, traffic grants, uh, we had none in September. We had no municipal trials, we had no circuit court trials. Um, we have a hearing coming up, I think in two weeks, though. Um, about a case that happened two years ago. Property compliance citations issued from the end of September to present day is eleven, although that number's gonna change up there tomorrow. Community service hours, we had one June now, um, that's gonna be doing some time with us. And events with the P, that the P is involved with, we have homecoming, traffic control, color run, trunk or treat, Halloween festivities. And, uh, training court, uh, testimony for Officer Witt.
What would tell me box traffic grant program, special compromise, um, the Sharon Police Department participating in the box traffic grant program.
So for the past twelve or so years, the village of Sharon Police Department has been, um, involved in a task force, um, all the, uh, the traffic, um, grants that were out there, that's O W Y, intoxicating driving, enforcement of, um, speeding, um, and also enforcement of seat belts. Um, that has always been funded by the Bureau of Transportation and some from the Department of Transportation. At our last meeting, uh, we were advised, um, by a sergeant that oversees the administrative part of this, uh, program that they're not going to be targeting, um, areas that have more accidents, more speeding, um, than probably smaller municipalities. So, um, we're not going to be part of that, uh, targeted group. Um, they get those numbers from community maps, a whole another software system that's where tracks where all these accidents happen that are speed-related and intoxication that gets their issue because of that nature. So, um, we could be part of the task force. Uh, most of the cities have been targeted, Myers-Santos, Whitewater, Elkhorn, Dalton, Geneva. Um, yeah, we could be part of it, but our officers would have to go to different jurisdictions. They're still under the liability of our police department, our standards, um, our policies. Um, we would have to pay, um, for some of that. And, uh, with overtime, so I just wanted the board to know that we probably wouldn't participate in this unless the board wanted me to do this, um, and send the officers out to different communities to enforce it.
I think we talked about that in the committee, and that was not the consensus, the consensus was to stay out.
I don't even know if we need a vote, it's up to you, but, um, it's just however you want to direct me to go forward and to advise the administrative part of this.
I'd like to leave our stuff here, since we really have no jurisdiction there unless they, especially in the county deputizes you.
Yeah, and that was a question asked by the chiefs of the, uh, association from this county. At this time, they're not going to deputize us. You, again, instead of, high-speed chase happens, you crash the car, it's all under hard time.
Probably one of the only counties they don't do that.
I'm sorry, what?
Probably one of the only counties that don't deputize.
That's possible, yeah. This is the time that the township said that he wasn't going to deputize at that time. He was gonna bring in from his court council, I haven't heard anything back yet.
If you need, if you need a vote, I would make a motion that we do not get involved in the box traffic grant program in Walworth County. Motion's been made in seconds, any questions?
Just to add that, there's a, this might change in a year or two, and then I come back to the board.
Home favor say aye?
Aye.
At the post, same sign. Fire EMS report, Chief Springhorn.
I don't have anything wild for you outside of what's on your report. It was a lot of crazy months, spent a little bit of time down in Bloom County, there's a few fires earlier in the month. Thanks Eric for the help, a couple lows there, it was a busy day. Um. Forty thirties, formerly back in service today, are tender to the township. Gets money into that doing frame repairs. Asset for the village, too, they'll spend about thirty-five thousand dollars of that to keep that in service, or pass DOT to not fall apart on us. Um, other than that, since the time I wrote this, we did give a job offer to our one applicant. She's in our E M T class currently, she lives in town. Seems motivated, decided to do it, we have one other application out. Can I have her back?
Bring her on. Any questions? Twenty twenty-four audit, motion to accept the twenty twenty-four audit.
I make the motion that we accept the twenty twenty-four audit. I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Pay request number fourteen. Motion to approve pay request number fourteen for stop construction in the amount of three hundred eighty thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty cents for project four six six one, Sharon wastewater treatment.
I'll make a motion that we approve pay request number fourteen for stop construction in the amount of three hundred eighty thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty cents for project four six six one, Sharon wastewater treatment facility.
I'll second.
Maybe seconded, are they about done out there?
Not quite. The next thing we face is, this government shutdown might be affecting our funding.
Right.
So, just to head.
There's two.
Right. We were told in the last meeting that they are not the bank, so.
Right.
Which is respectable.
I get it. All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. All right, ordinance ten fourteen twenty twenty-five two eighty-eight, amending, amending chapter one eleven zoning and creating sections one sixty-seven A, one sixty-one seven A, and section one sixty-two seven A. Dwelling size RS two and RS three, single-family district of the village of Sharon Municipal Facility. This came about, uh, from the planning commission.
So we talked about this at the, um, general ops meeting, and I had asked about whether or not we needed a public hearing. I also checked with the leader municipalities, and they did say that in zoning changes, we do need to have a class two publication and, um, public hearing for that, so I think both this and the next, um, agenda item, we need to send back to public hearing. Since it's already been through, um, the planning commission, it probably, I don't know if the public hearing would be here or the planning commission, but, um, as far as the lawyer's, um, opinion and the statute that he referenced, we need to have that public hearing and publication first. Now I have an email from the lawyer, he would like to see it.
I trust you. I won't go along with that.
Also, I, I mean, I think having a dwelling size is a, a good thing. Just the way it's written, in most municipalities, you do square footage, so it doesn't include the garage. Just having the dwelling size, which, you know, if you have a four-car garage in a little tiny house, you would still fit in that thirty-by-forty footprint. We might wanna consider doing a square footage, um, so that if you go a two-story or, you know, a different shape of a house.
Yeah, we talked about that at the planning commission, and they came back with that, but we weren't talking square footage, like twelve hundred square feet. And we got back to that, I forget exactly why.
So how is it measured, like, let's say your garage is offset, and if you just box it?
You don't count, you count the living. You don't count living, you don't count garage.
So if you're, but then that complicates things even more, if you're, if you're doing your sixty-six foot wide lots, and then you gotta have a thirty-by-forty, which doesn't include your attached garage.
I live in one of those. They stack them up. That's what happens, the garage is shoved into the middle of it. I have a bedroom over the top, so.
It is.
That's what happens, I mean, that, that's how you get, get around that stuff.
It just makes it cleaner if it's a square footage versus a, a footprint size, because then people up, you can still satisfy the square footage versus being wide within your lot in some of these typical lots.
Biggest thing is we're trying to do some stop gaps for sure on our zoning, there are some gaps, but it does always get rid of them. And that's, that's a big project, and we're not ready quite yet for that. We have to do some things, so we don't have simple white mobile homes and subdivisions that shouldn't be, in the subdivision, it should be the trailer park or manufactured home park. So I think that's the main goal of this right now.
Yeah, I, I completely agree, it's just, the cleaner it is at the beginning, the easier it is down the line when we do, redo everything.
So that's one for, I'm kind of out of time, I was gonna think of the Hailers thing, but we'll see if we got time for publications. Rezone two oh four and two oh six Ballard Street. Motion to approve the planning commission recommendation to rezone two oh four Ballard Street. I'm not reading that. And two oh six, from RS two to RS three. That's where you're getting into your lot size. Side lots, pretty narrow.
And that is one where it is zoned currently RS two, is that correct?
Right, but most of the houses down there.
But it, it doesn't qualify, because RS two is seventy-five foot minimum, so it should've always been RS three.
I'll make a motion to approve the planning commission recommendation to rezone two oh four Ballard Street, two oh six Ballard Street, from RS two to RS three, single-family.
I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Side lot setbacks, motion to approve recommendation from the planning commission to approve side lines that backed at ten feet or a total of twenty feet in accordance with the state UDC code for dwelling unit separation parcels UA two-three-five-two zero-zero-zero-zero-two and UA two-three-five-two zero-zero-zero-zero-three.
Well, this is the one I had a question on, um, you didn't hear back from Jerry, I'm assuming. So it says, in accordance with the Wisconsin State UDC code for dwelling unit separation, I don't know what that means, and, um, Shannon apparently didn't know what that meant either, or didn't know what that was referencing. There is a, a.
Presently, it's twelve-five.
Well, it's ten foot with a, a twenty-five foot overall, so.
Basically twelve-five.
This, with, even if with the thirty-by-forty, these lots would work for that, you just have to be very careful in your construction that you don't get off of foot. But, um, is there a reason that they're not going with a variance? Or like, is this a variance for those two lots versus changing the zoning, I'm not sure what we're, what we're asking.
Because the rest of the, I wanna say, eight of whatever houses are down there are already this distance apart, so nobody's watched this for years.
Is that the building inspector's job, or the zoning, like, who, who checks?
Should be zoning, but, you know, the last, when was the last house built out there?
Warren.
Right. So, so there's just, how do you tell somebody that can't, everybody else already did, and why we're changing this to match up again?
I was just curious.
Sometimes you tell the bad deck, and you just gotta deal with it. I, I don't know what else to say.
Is that?
You can't say to this guy, hey, you're fine, but you guys have to conform now.
Right, but at some point, you do need to enforce your code, like, either enforce it or you don't.
And that's why you're changing it. And it will obviously register that.
I'll make a motion to approve recommendations from the planning commission to approve sidewalk setbacks that have been placed in accordance with the Wisconsin State UDC code for dwelling unit separation parcels UA two-three-five-two zero-zero-zero-zero-two and UA two-three-five-two zero-zero-zero-zero-three.
I'll second that.
Been made and seconded, any other discussion? I will say, there is another lot, there's another setback that is also conforming to that change.
We'll have, so we're gonna lump in that last lot, even though it's not on the agenda? Like, how do we do that?
It's there, it's, actually, I think that one's wider, isn't it, because?
It's not wider, but it goes to the back.
They're all long, they're all long, like two hundred and something.
I believe that third lot is connected to another piece of land, goes behind the front.
Around the whole thing, back to his house.
The frontage has all sixty-six of all three of those.
I don't think he'll build on it.
But are you saying that this motion also includes that last?
No. Motion's been made and seconded, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
No.
Motion carries. Garbage and recycling hall, or motion to approve the public utility committee recommendation to accept the proposal from John's disposal service for five years, beginning January one, twenty twenty-six.
This was brought up in our public utility meeting. Uh, we basically had, uh, three, uh, three bids come in. And we have decided, because of the, uh, what Johns had proposed, we decided that would be the best company for us to go with. So I'll make the motion to approve the public utility committee recommendation to accept a proposal from John's disposal service for five years, beginning January first, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that.
Hello.
And you are?
This, can you guys hear me all right? My name is Justin Montani, I am the, um, representative for GFL, which is one of the companies that submitted a proposal for the recent RFP, we're also the company that is responsible for servicing you guys currently. Um, I just wanted to say a couple of things before the, the board makes a, a motion to continue, or to, uh, accept the proposal that John's disposal submitted. So I've, I've been in communication with Dawn, and, um, we abided by everything that was listed in the RFP, so there were two options. One was to continue with the current service structure of, um, weekly trash service, every other week recycling service, and then there was a request for monthly bulk item collection. So, um, we submitted pricing for that to abide by all of those, and then the other option was for, um, weekly recycling service, so we also provided pricing for that. I was informed by Dawn that the stipulations in regards to bulk item collection was essentially what provoked the, the public utilities, utilities committee to make the recommendation to, to proceed with John's disposal. I just wanted to offer a little bit of clarification before a motion is made. So with our bulk item collection, we are offering to collect one bulk item per month for the original, um, proposal that was submitted, and then in addition to the one item per month, we're also allowing the opportunity for residents to contact us directly and schedule, um, additional items to be collected in addition to the one item that's included in the cost of service. And the reason for us doing this is to try and keep the costs to the village as, as low as we can, we're aware that, you know, it's an increase from the, the current costs of what you guys are paying, but, um, it's been a while since you guys have renewed the contract, and as I'm sure you're all, you know, well aware, the cost of doing business is going up drastically, and I would say for the services that you're being provided, or for what we're offering to provide, um, for the price that you're paying is a, is a very good deal. And obviously, there, you know, pains associated with changing service providers, you know, whether it be distribution and removal of the, the carts and, um, distributing that information out to the residents. Once we were informed that it was in relation to the bulk item collection services, um, we did provide, um, an additional option for bulk items to be included on weekly service, so every week on the service day, um, residents would be allowed to place up to three items per week, and I did provide some additional pricing for that. Obviously, the, the cost per unit goes up with that service option, but I did wanna let you guys know that that is also another option, but again, we tried to abide by everything that was requested in the RFP while also keeping costs as low as possible. I appreciate you guys letting me address you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely know that switching didn't go easy the last time, so we're very well aware of that. Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion?
I just, I didn't know if we discussed, um, if we would be going with the weekly or the bi-weekly for recycling. I believe weekly was gonna be the weekly. Makes it easier just to do a whole, and it was like two dollars a month.
Cleaner.
Yeah. And easy.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Change to John's recycle, John's.
John's disposal.
John's. Service for five years, beginning January one, twenty twenty-six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Resolution ten fourteen twenty twenty-five two ninety, a resolution approving the sale of property UPA zero-zero-zero-one-seven and UPA zero-zero-zero-two-zero, and authorizing the village president to execute opposing documents. This is Allen's. I do, but I'm not reading this. That's what you're waiting for, I'm not gonna read all that. Um, I was just looking for the purchase price. Is that five thousand?
That's what it was, yes.
Yes. Parcel of land the village owns, Mr. Bowman down on George Street, wanted to clean up his, square up his lot line, so that's what this is, the mountain. I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Resolution approving the sale of property UPA seventeen and UPA twenty. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Sharon's Community School Color Run Walk, motion to approve blocking off Park Avenue, Pearl Center, and Shur Street for the Sharon Community Color Run Walk on four sixteen from four thirty to six thirty. And we sent the letter, we all have that. entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the Sharon Community School Color Run Walk.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Hearing, special meeting, the special, to set a special meeting to meet with Hillers to go over refinancing and financing. Did they, she, did she wanna do it in October or November?
Um.
Sooner the better. We gotta catch up here.
I don't think it'd be a problem if you waited.
I'd like the first week in November then. First Tuesday, Wednesday, the fourth or fifth.
Wednesday, the fifth?
Fourth, Tuesday, the fourth. Tuesday, the fourth.
Like after committee meetings?
After committee meetings. I'll make that motion, we're gonna have a special meeting, uh, set up for November fourth to the, after the committee meetings.
You know, that's election meeting.
Do we have any?
I don't know if we have any.
Pardon?
We have any, we don't have any elections.
We don't have any elections, do we?
No.
Okay.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, had a special meeting on November fourth, that's the time, it is after the committee.
I'll second it.
November fourth, time is be, be immediately following the committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, same sign. SBA Sable Tower Expansion, discussion of motion, um, SBA cell tower expansion, uh, we better.
Aye.
At the post, same sign. SBA Sable Tower Expansion, discussion motion, SBA cell tower expansion. We've been approached by Horizon to put another building up on our water tower. They'll need to put a building up there, working on that part right now. Easance how they get there and stuff like that. My question is, at this point, first, is it okay to have a Horizon on our water tower? And two, to accept the money that they're offering and make a lump sum or monthly payment? And I think we did the first one as a lump sum and that's what painted the water tower last time. And it would coincide with their present, their current contract with the village. I'm not sure how long that went till thirty-something.
Thirty-two? Was it till twenty thirty-two?
Yeah, it's in that area.
I think it was for seven additional years.
The contract says fifty-five years.
Fifty-five, whatever that was. A long time, yeah. That's why, that's why we could paint the water tower.
Twenty seventy-three. Oh.
I won't be here.
So it would be run concurrently with this one?
Yeah, yeah.
So it wouldn't add any time, it'd just add additional funds?
Just the funds.
And have, have they discussed if they want to do a lump sum or monthly?
No, that's what I'm asking. I think we should, that's our negotiation, I think, to them.
It would be a lump sum.
It doesn't go up.
Yeah, if you could work in a percentage increase year after year, that might be more beneficial because then you know you have finances coming in versus you just have one lump that is gone by painting the water tower. Where it's, you know, we still have to maintain it for the next.
It's twelve hundred dollars, thirteen hundred probably per month.
Twelve to thirteen?
Amazing how little money they take for that.
Well, I mean, this agreement was like three hundred a month, it worked out to, so twelve to thirteen is much better. And so if that was eighteen or twenty-five, so that's seven years. So additional forty-eight years. Well, that's significantly more than a hundred ninety-five thousand that we got.
Now, there's gonna be a lot going on in there. It's going to be a point of contention soon due to the state asking us to do a complete audit, I'm sure.
How soon would this happen? Like, could this be wrapped in, you know, with our financing? If you know we're getting this lump sum, then we want to have to borrow as much.
Maybe. No, I think it's gonna have to be water.
Right, but isn't part of, none of the financing is woven through?
No.
Okay.
Refinancing.
Some of the refinancing would be, yeah. So would we be able to?
I can ask Hailers, I can mention it.
Does anything to reduce our, our overall burden is beneficial before the money gets borrowed? Because once it's borrowed, you can't just throw it at it and reduce payments.
I'll make a motion to accept the, the idea of accepting Horizon on the water tower.
I second it.
I think he's got the plan, I'm not sure. All right, Trumpertree Street closure, motion to approve the Sharon Chamber request to close North Street in front of Veterans Park on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from one to five P M for Trumpertree.
This is the French version, closing now, roads in Sharon. Can I catch you?
I saw that, I saw you.
I make a motion to approve the Sharon Chamber request to close North Street in front of Veterans Park on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from one to five for the Trumpertree. Second that.
Seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At the post, same sign. Carrier, Trickertree Hours, motion to approve holding Trickertree Hours on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, from four to seven.
I'll make a motion, we approve holding Trickertree Hours on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, from four o'clock to seven P M.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At the post, same sign. Motion to adjourn with the order. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Anything you can do.
Thank you.